All set, all right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting of May 31st. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. You all hear me okay out there? It's usually a little bit louder from here, so. If everyone can hear us, then I suppose it's okay.
Hello, hello.
Sounds good.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the submission of town council meeting minutes from May 10, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C1. This is ordinance 2023-7 to Chapter 16, Article 5 for stopping, standing, and parking. And this is an amendment to read, accessible disability parking. It's the second reading.
Make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approves or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C2. This is ordinance 2023-8, Chapter 16, to Article 2, a motor vehicle in traffic. And this is, this is an amendment to update the parking violation schedule. Second reading.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Is there any discussion?
Just briefly, thank, thank you, Madam Clerk, you know, for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item of business is C3. This is ordinance 2023-9, Chapter 16, Article 5, to stopping, standing, and parking. And this is an amendment to add a no, a no parking space on Thane Street at the pump station. Second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Discussion? We just went through a couple of these real quick. This one is requested by our sewer department to make sure that they can access the pump station, which is on the end of Thane Street, kind of in front of the Coast Guard house. I know we kind of buzzed through some of these really quickly. The most of them are basic housekeeping. But I figured I'd point that one up because I know we have other discussions about Thane Street. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C4. This is ordinance 2023-10. This is Chapter 16, Article 5, the stopping, standing, and parking. And this is to add a 30-minute parking restriction on Bradford Street. This is first reading.
I make a motion that we constitute this first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, that this constitutes first reading. Any discussion?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, this certainly assists the business, the local business in the area to provide some parking that's overdue.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C5. This is ordinance 2023-11, Chapter 16, Article 4, of the residential parking. And this is to correct the language of Lower State Street parking. This is first reading.
Motion to approve first reading.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D1, and this is Donna Chabot. This is from the Bristol Fourth of July Committee. This is a request for mobile food truck establishment event permit for the outdoor concert series from June 20th to July 2nd from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the director of Parks and Rec has made some good suggestions, and I certainly would ask that those be followed.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D2. This is Stephen Dion from the SSD on 520 Thane Street. This is a request for dancing and entertainment license. And I believe Steve is hearing. Order.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, we have, we've never had entertainment in the past, and I want to make sure I don't step on anybody's toes. So, so here, so here I am. So, I mean, we have bookings that are like 50th wedding anniversaries or small weddings, et cetera, and they want to bring in, they want to bring in entertainment. This would happen maybe once or twice a month. There'd be no late-night entertainment. We're, we're not in the entertainment business. This is just, this just complements our, our food business.
Could you give this council an example of what might constitute entertainment that you speak of?
You mean like a DJ or something like that?
Exactly.
Yeah, DJ or a small band, not, not, not a rock and roll band. Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, we know, we realize we're in a residential neighborhood, and we would respect that.
How long have you been there?
This will be 40 years.
So, it's my understanding that you've been there for 40 years, and that both you and Sue Dion and your children, Nick, Mandy, and Ally, as well as your staff have worked tirelessly to provide excellent food, service, and hospitality to those who enter your door. Does it sound like this was planned? I don't, I don't know if this was.
Surprise to me.
Yes, and that was the whole idea. So, I'll finish this afterwards because, but actually, no, I'm going to finish right now. This is a proclamation for the 40 years that you've been in business. And I asked the question, I already knew the answer. Isn't that wonderful? This is us recognizing and celebrating yours and your family's success.
I appreciate that.
You have been a staple down there. You have outstanding food, and your service is outstanding also. It's welcoming, it's inviting. It's a pivotal part. We all talk to people that are in Bristol and then out of Bristol, and it always gets, oh, have you been to SS Dion? And I said, it's closed, it's closed. So, you do a wonderful job. This was signed by my colleagues and I, so myself, Mary Perella, Tony Texera, Tim Sweeney, Aaron Lay, Melissa Cadero, the town clerk, and Steve Contenti, the town administrator.
Wonderful, you're, you're making me blush.
You're welcome, and it's well deserved. We get a round of applause for it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may briefly.
Certainly.
It certainly has been always a pleasure going there, and every time I go there, I get treated as Mr. Mayor rather than town administrator, when I was town administrator. And even now, you know, still go in, I guess, that's okay. You can keep the, you can keep using the title. That's all right. Just make sure you include Steve on the round when he visits as well, which you have done as well. I know you have. And as it was already pointed out, the family environment and just enjoying going there, you know, over the years, it's always been a pleasure. You know, the environment, the food, you know, so keep it up. You know, I know you'll be doing it for the next 40.
I wish the rest of the family was here. This is a surprise to me.
So, yeah, it's recorded, so.
Oh, it's recorded.
posterity. We can see you blessed.
I hope my mother-in-law sees it.
We better not reject this one, right?
Yeah, with all those, with all those positive words, we better get you your dancing and entertainment license so you can dance tonight and celebrate these, all these good wishes to you. Chairman, I make a motion based on the positive recommendations to, a motion to approve.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Discussion? I'll make one more is that I would be remiss without thanking the clerk. Melissa, this was truly your idea, and I thought it was, it's outstanding. So, thank you. Of course you can.
So, I, I just want to say I've had the privilege of working at the SSD on for 18 years while, of the 40 years that he was there. And Stephen and Sue have always been very special to me, but they've always treated their staff not like staff, but like family. But they've also done that to their customers. Every time that they've come in, we've always acknowledged people by their name with a friendly face, and he continues to do that. And I'm lucky not to only have been worked there, but I live right next door to him, so I still get to see him every day. So, just thank you for, for allowing me to even work there and still become a patron there and keeping those doors open for this long. It's, it's truly amazing, and I appreciate you and your family and everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you. My sincere thanks. I owe you a hug.
So, Steve, you got to be careful because she lives right next door, so we'll hear if there's a noise.
So, you better invite her to dance.
I do, I do want it to say it's great that your family, your children are in the business with you, and it's going on to like another generation. That's wonderful.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Why don't you come up and grab this?
Well, one last comment. No, I just wanted to know that Dion's have been here a long time. My great-grandfather, Thomas Dion, was a stonemason, and he helped with the stonework at, at Blythewall.
No kidding. Wow. Awesome.
He died a long time ago.
Thank you for the history. I should probably set some expectation. If you're up in front next, please don't plan on getting a proclamation. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D3, and this is Edmund Woods from Pearl Holdings, DBA, the Nest, 29 State Street. This is a request for sidewalk use license with the alcohol service.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approves or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D4. We have Zach Rivers from Judge Wari Bean, 1 State Street. This is a request for State Street, the outdoor, I'm sorry, State Street seasonal outdoor expansion with alcohol service license.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to approve, Mr. Solicitor.
Yes, so I just wanted to point out that at the end of March, the council adopted an ordinance permitting seasonal outdoor dining. And with that, in that ordinance, there were 11 conditions that the restaurant owners have to meet in order to have the license actually issued to Steve Greenleaf's office. One of those that is pertinent is the condition we got, it's condition number seven regarding ADA compliance. Basically says establishment shall accommodate handicapped persons in the outside dining areas, et cetera. So, just like when you issue a liquor license, subject to conditions, certificate of good standing, insurance, et cetera. You are going to be issuing a license, if you vote on this, conditionally, and the license will only issue if the 11 requirements in your ordinance are addressed. Specifically, again, with ADA, because I want it to be clear to all the applicants, this requires that the outdoor seating area itself be ADA compliant. That means someone who is handicapped would have the same privilege as someone who's not handicapped in terms of being able to get to their seat. And also, if they have to leave their seat at the table to go use a restroom, et cetera, there must be provision for that. So, that's what this is all about. And your, again, voting approval, if you so do, will be subject to all of these conditions.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. This weekend, obviously, was a holiday weekend. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I made an effort to write around and just check the outdoor dining places, specifically the sidewalk dining. If I looked at Leo's, they averaged throughout the weekend about four to five tables. Roberto's, they had their chef tables. I would say probably around six tables. The Pomodoro's, they don't open on Sundays, but they were pretty heavily attended. And when I drove down State Street on those three days, the max I saw about sidewalk dining was about five tables. So, it kind of disappoints me that we move in this direction to approve this with the removing all the parking spaces. In fact, I went to Bristol House of Pizza to pick up a pizza. I had to park in the driveway because it was very limited, the parking on the area. So, I just like to share that.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain, Mr. Chairman.
I will also abstain. I'm just, I want to be consistent. I also believe in our process. This council passed this ordinance, and I believe it was, it went through its correct steps, and I can, I agree. And voting against it would make no sense to me, but voting for it would go against what I've expressed in the past, so I'm going to abstain. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D5. This is Peter Cavallieri from Folio, 31 State Street. This is a request for State Street seasonal outdoor expansion with liquor service license.
Based on all the positive recommendation, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to approve. Any discussion?
I would only add that as you make these motions, you put subject to the requirements of the ordinance.
Subject to the requirements and the ordinance. You're welcome.
Mary, would you resecond that?
Yes, I'll resecond that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
I'm also abstaining for 40 states. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D6. This is Tina Micaletti, M&amp;T's Pizzeria, Doing Business As PO's Pizzeria, 381B, Metacom Avenue. This is a request for vitroling license. They, it does also say CF1 because they will be also requesting a, an additional one class BV limited liquor license.
I don't think so. I think we'll do them separately. Thank you. Counsel?
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim.
I think of Mary.
Okay, Mary seconded.
Yeah.
Okay, to approve, discussion? Is Tina Micaletti here? No. I was going to offer a 30-second commercial, so, okay. Any other discussion?
Just said it's great that they're expanding. It's great that they're expanding, you know, business is growing and doing well. Yeah.
I was going to say exactly the same. You know, they've been in business for quite a while. The Pomodoro's, some little hole in the wall, so to speak, you know. But doing, doing extremely well, and it's nice that they wish to expand.
There's always room for more good pizza. Always.
Always, always.
Looking forward to it. Any other discussion? See, now I'm hungry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Look at Door Dash.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is E1. This is the sidewalk use license renewals, 2023 to 2024.
Based on all the right, positive recommendations, I more, that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E2. This is a sidewalk alcohol use license renewals for 2023 to 2024.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. I see that the Pearl Holdings is not included in this. It's because we are approving for the first time. Okay.
Yeah, they don't constitute as a renewal.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F1. This is Tina Micaletti for M&amp;T's Pizzeria, Doing Business As PO's Pizzeria, 381B, Metacom Avenue. This is a request for one additional class BV limited liquor license.
So, yes, if this council believes that it's appropriate to create, and just for perspective, we just recently took one back or had one given back, so it would bring us up to our prior number. I'm, so. License. So, what we would need to do, my understanding, we would need to make a motion.
Exactly.
Second.
So, motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to refer the solicitor to take steps to amend the ordinance to create an additional BV license. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing for the July 12th meeting.
I heard that in the beginning of the motion. It's really strange. Outstanding. Could you say that again, Madam Clerk?
And schedule a public hearing for the July 12th council meeting.
So, Tony, that was your motion?
Yes.
And that was seconded by you, Tim? Is that correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, well said.
Discussion?
I will.
Tony, excellent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F2. This is Wayne Marshall, 33 Cook Street. This is a request for removal of no parking box in the vicinity of the residence. And I believe we have a recommendation from the police on that, too.
We do. Yes, chief, or, or Mr. Administrator, you tell me. I know we had some, it looks as though, reading through this agenda item, that there was discussion with the petitioner, and they ultimately agreed that it wasn't necessary. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Did I just capture it, chief? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we could have pulled the petition, you know, through, through the clerk's office. Lieutenant Wasn't, he went out and went through the fire trail, similar to what we would do for creation of a new parking block. When he displayed that the homeowner across the street, and when he saw the visual aid of him not being able to pull out, and there was a car parked, he realized that his petition did not have merit.
Excellent. Chief, it's worth saying again, this, we'll call it updated because it's not new anymore. This updated process is just outstanding. It used to be nebulous before, and this is just emphatically clear. It just helps so much. So, outstanding job.
Yeah, I agree. It saves a lot of time. I'll make a motion to deny due to the PD's analysis on, on the parking spot.
Motion made by Tim and seconded by Tony to deny. Discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F3. This is Jody Tregula, 71 King Philip Avenue. And this is a request for no parking box in the vicinity of the residence.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to refer to the solicitor to create an ordinance to create a no parking box. Any discussion?
No, I just thought the recommendations were great, so there's no reason to deny.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F4, and this is Dennis. It's a door 19 Congregational Street. This is a request for accessible parking space. First reading.
Counsel?
Tony.
Okay.
Sir.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. I make a motion that we follow the recommendation of the police department and deny it since there is off-street parking for the vehicles that the family own.
I agree. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to deny. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F5. This is Mary Kay Wright for Arts and, Arts in Common. This is a request to close a portion of High and Wally Street for the annual Porch Fest music event, and that way, this to be held on September 17, 2023, from 2:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. with the rain date of September 24.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded, I heard Tim first, to approve. Is Mary Kay here? Nancy is here. Nancy, you want a 30-second commercial?
Sure.
Come on up. If you could state your name and address for the record and proceed on a 30-second commercial.
30 seconds. Nancy Kelner, 10 Hope Street, and then here for Mary Kay Wright. So, Porch Fest will be having its fifth edition this year in September. We're going to go one, one house greater, so it's going to be 10 porches, 20 bands. It's from three to six on Sunday, September 17th, followed by a second-line parade to Unity Park for some more celebrating afterward. So, lots of music, all genres, every different kind of music you could imagine, and we're really looking forward to it.
Outstanding.
Thanks for the commercial.
You're welcome.
Excellent.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G1, and this is a appointment on the Harbor Commission. This is for one term set to expire. It says March 2023, but that's actually a typographical error. It's March 2026. And then there's also one vacant term set to expire in March 2026, and we have John McDonald from 15 Stephen Drive for interest in appoint, in reappointment.
I make a motion that we reappoint John.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to reappoint John McDonald to the Harbor Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And before we go any farther, I will say for this council, thank you to the boards and commissions. This one was for the Harbor Commission, but all of our boards and commissions make the world go around locally. They are an integral part of what makes Bristol Bristol, and it's outstanding that so many people give their time away from their family, away from their own things that they want to do to give back to the town. And this council says, thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item of business is I1. This is Susan Martini, 46 Highland Road. This is a request for support of the proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Susan, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Sure. I'm Susan Martini. I live at 46 Highland Road, and thank you for allowing me to, to submit this proclamation. I'm a 30-year resident of Bristol and a Warren native. I'm a mother, a grandmother, and an active community member, and I'm proud to call Bristol my home. This proclamation is necessary to raise awareness of our current national health crisis caused by the increase of gun violence in America. According to the CDC, gun violence is now the leading cause of death for American children and teens, more than motor vehicle accidents, cancer, suffocation, or drowning. 90% of suicidal acts using a firearm result in death. Suicides among teenagers, veterans, and middle-aged white men have become a growing concern all across America. There have been more than 200 mass shootings in the U.S. so far this year, and a mass shooting is considered where four or more people are injured and are killed, according to the Gun Violence Archive. In the last three years, there have been more than 600 mass shootings. That's almost two a day on average. By passing this proclamation, Bristol will join numerous towns, cities, and states across the U.S. to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence in our country, and to know that as a country, we can do more to end this public health crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I did forget to mention that we did receive a, a letter today. So, received that meeting document from Peter Hewer.
Hewit?
Hewit. And in opposition to the proclamation. Forgot to mention that earlier.
Thank you. Counsel?
Comment about it, and it's just a piggy, like, wording. I don't think it matters because it's already prepared, so, you know. But if you're going to be going from other, to other communities, I, I think the point of the public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. I think you mean, do you mean local government or a mayor or the town administrator, or like the, the local, I think you mean local government, right?
Yeah, it would be town administration in this case. Yeah.
Caught my eye, but.
I agree.
He's fine for this, but.
He's fine for this, but.
I can I can edit that. Which line is it?
It's just a whereas by itself. It's like.
Oh, I see.
Seventh line.
I can words I can wordsmith that to local government if that's okay with sure.
Great.
Yeah. No, I I just wanted to thank you, Susan, for coming here today and for doing this. It's it's kind of hard for me to say, but I did experience a loss of a friend this year due to gun violence, and it's something that I think about every day, and I think it's critically important to raise awareness about gun violence. There's a couple of important statistics, I think, that demonstrate that importance, and I'll read them off right here. Two that stuck out to me was, one was that the Journal of Public Health estimates that 4.6 million American children live in a home where at least one gun is kept loaded and unlocked. The idea here is to make sure to raise awareness and to, you know, educate folks about safely storing your firearms. So that children are getting 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 a hold of them. Another was that gun violence is usually precipitated by warning signs.
Yes.
And we need to start raising awareness about what some of those warning signs are. And one of the statistics that I read that came out of a US Department of Education and Secret Service report was that four out of five shootings, in four out of five shootings, there was another person that had knowledge of a planned attack. And if people know that something like that is going to happen, if they hear something like that that's going to happen. It's really important. They almost have a moral duty to inform somebody or to call a hotline to anonymously report that there might be something like that happening. So again, I wanted to thank you for coming here today and for helping to raise awareness about what I consider to be a really important issue.
Thank you, Aaron. And I just wanted to say that in this room are the Coblins, Kathy and Steve, and they lived in Sandy Hook during the Sandy Hook mass shooting. Kathy was a school nurse, so they know what it's like when a community is devastated. And that community has never recovered. And that I, you know, I just would hate to see that happen. It's happening, but I would hate to see that happen anymore. So I think by raising awareness, people might secure their guns, and they might tell if they know somebody's threatening suicide or to kill someone else, and it's all about awareness.
Well, I I hope that you just bringing this up here has maybe raised some of that awareness, and with that being said, I'll I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation with the edits that were suggested by Councilwoman Pirella.
I'll second the motion, and I concur with Councilman Lay. I mean, we are the only country in the world with this problem. We had last year 647 mass shootings last year, and this year we're up to what, 264? It's incredible.
It is incredible.
Shooting. We have to do something. If we're not be if we're not going to be aware of it, we can't just, you know, put our heads in the sand if the tenant's going to get any better. We have to make sure we're aware. So I think this is very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I believe, you know, time flies, and after 31 years in education, you kind of forget times a little bit, but I believe it was 87, 88, Steve. I mean, Mr. Administrator, I was on cafeteria duty working at the high school when we had probably one of the first high school shootings in the country was experienced right here in Bristol. And happened right in the courtyard while we were on cafeteria duty.
I remember that, and at the time, it was so unusual, and and now unfortunately, it's not.
I was actually a student at the school. I remember the shot being fired.
Oh, my God.
It's, yeah, it's, I and we can, I, we shouldn't be able to tell stories like that.
Yeah.
I'd also like to clarify something. It would seem strange that somebody would be in opposition of this. The letter actually didn't, to paraphrase or to clarify, the clerk is absolutely correct. It did start as opposition. It talked about actually what Aaron had spoken about, which is changing behaviors. Because a gun obviously is a dangerous piece, but it it is dangerous in the hands of whoever it happens to be. So the letter did speak to that. So it's it's just to be fair, and Madam Clerk, you weren't being unfair. But just it did say that it supported your proclamation with some with higher focus on changing habits and attitudes. So just just for the point. So any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I2, and this is Town Treasurer Hassel, and this is in regards to Hague Shahidi and Company with the presentation of the fiscal year 2022 annual annual financial statements.
Sarah, this is your part of the show, isn't it? So floor is yours.
The for your 22 audited financials is Taylor Matthews from Hague Shahidi. And just to note that copies of this full report is on the town.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right. So good evening. My name is Taylor Matthews. I was the audit supervisor in the town of Bristol FY22 audit. I'd first like to start off by thanking Sarah and everyone at the town hall for a smooth and successful audit. So I'm just going to take you through the financial statements. If you have a set in front of you, I will have page numbers for you guys to reference. So on page one of the financial statements is the auditor's opinion on the financial statements. The town received a clean opinion or an unmodified report, meaning there were no findings. I would like to point out that the audit report looks different than in prior years. The report letter, our opinion paragraph, has moved to the first paragraph versus being towards the end like in prior years. And I'd also like to point out that there were no management letter comments issued in the current year. On page four begins the management discussion and analysis, which provides an objective, easily readable analysis of financials as well as comparative information for the statement of net position and statement of activities. I will discuss the highlights in the management discussion and analysis as we go through the financial statements. On pages 12 through 15, you will find the government-wide financial statements. And the government-wide financial statements report information about the town as a whole using accounting methods similar to those used by private sector companies. The statement of net position includes all the government's assets, deferred outflows of resources, liabilities, and deferred inflows of resources. So here you'll see all your fixed assets, your long-term debt, and any OPEB or pension liabilities. The governmental activities here account for the basic services, including general government, public safety. And these are often financed through property taxes and charges for services. You will also see your business-type activities, which where the town charges a fee to cover the cost of certain services. And the business-type activity that the town has is the sewer fund. So just a quick highlights there is that the government-wide financial statements, the town's total net position increased by 714,000 as a result of the year's operations. The governmental activities realized a decrease in net position by 366,000, which was mostly due to your changes in pension and OPEB liabilities. While your business-type activities reported net position increase of 1 million compared to last year, which was the result of an increase in user fees as well as changes in the OPEB liability and the net pension. On page 16 are the governmental funds. Most most of the basic services provided by the town are financed through governmental funds. Unlike the government-wide financial statements, the governmental funds focus on near-term inflows and outflows of spendable resources. So the town maintains many governmental funds. And there were two major funds for the town that you will see in the financial statements, and that was your general fund and your open space bonded project. All the other funds are included in the non-major column. And I would like to point out that the governmental finance funds reported an ending fund balance of 22.4 million, which was an increase of 2.8 million compared to the prior year. And this was due to the result of additional revenues. And I also like to point out, most importantly, that the unassigned unassigned fund balance for the general fund was 7.5 million, approximately 14% of the total general fund revenues. And this unassigned fund balance can be used for any kind of anything in the general fund. And then on pages 20 through 23, you will see the proprietary funds. And the proprietary funds, or sometimes referred to as enterprise funds, are used to report the same functions presented as business-type activities in the government-wide financial statements. So the information you will see here, you also see on your government-wide, it's the same. On pages 24 through 25, you will see the fiduciary funds, and fiduciary funds count for resources held for the benefits of other parties outside of the government. So these funds are not available to support the town's own programs. So here you'll have things like your town pension fund and your OPEB and pension plans. The town pension plan was funded 59.14%, and the town OPEB is actually an OPEB asset and is funded over 100% for the town. On pages 26 through 93, you will find the notes to the financial statements. And these notes just provide more detailed information regarding items that were presented on the face of the financial statement. So like fixed assets, long-term debt, it breaks out that detail for you. And then on pages 94 through 144, this is your required supplemental information, which includes your budget to actual and other required pension and OPEB disclosures. I'd like to talk about the budget to actual on page 94. Some highlights include that the general fund ended with revenues recorded in the amount of 1.1 million in excess of budgeted amounts. This was mostly due to property taxes coming in 982,000 over-budgeted amounts. Your expenditures ended the year with a favorable variance of 371,000, and this was due to general savings. And you will note that the general fund had an operating deficit of 848,000 this year. And this was mostly due to the transfers were over-budget by 2 million. Most of your transfers went to the capital projects fund, 1.6 million. And in that amount included a million-dollar transfer to the road repair bonded project fund. And then on pages 115 begins your supplemental information, and you will find things like the individual fund statements for each fund the town has as well as your tax collector's annual report and the MTP2. And finally, on page 157 is the auditor's report regarding internal controls. Again, the town received a clean report, and there were no findings. Are there any questions?
You didn't go over much, so probably no questions at all. It's nothing. I have a couple of takeaways. Unassigned being at 14% is wonderful. You gave a lot of wonderful information, and just for the record, if you're listening to to all of this, I'd asked that we summarize this information because you can get into the weeds, and that was summarized and in the weeds. It is also so important. Having this, we are required to do it, and we're happy to do it. This is hats off to, where's Carl? Then it's Carl. Carl's back there. Okay. Sarah and Carl, and the hard work that comes from their department, our other departments, the administrator, department heads themselves, this council, not in that order, I'm including everybody. And your firm, talking about increases in revenues, talking about OPEB. So our local retirement that we're responsible, we are funding over 100%. That is not the norm, ladies and gentlemen. It's so, and actually, maybe you could speak to us just high level. If you were to speak to what is the norm, I know it's not 100. I know it's not 90. So.
I would say OPEB in general in communities this size was under about 50%. We don't really see much that are assets, and they're actually overfunded.
That means the people that have worked for this town have the money that they need and were promised to to retire. We made a promise and we're keeping it, and that is just one example of so many outstanding things that are happening. Again, I'm just for the record, I did ask you to summarize. Thank you. And I can tell that you were through right through it, so. But this council, does council have any questions or comments that it would like?
I just had a quick question. Sorry. Okay. I said a question. You mentioned the the budget versus actuals, and it sounds like we've got savings. So what we're budgeting and what we're actually spending, it seems like we are we're budgeting on target, correct? And it's not really like we have a lot of outliers at all.
Yeah. The only thing difference was the transfers this year, which I believe you sold the property and that you have a plan to actually pay back the general fund over 10 years. I believe that was voted by you guys. So it will be coming back to the general fund over 10 years, but was moved out for road repairs.
Good. Good. That's great.
If I may, that that was the good in property.
Thank you.
That we did a an interest-free loan to ourselves to do the road paving. That was for last year's road paving.
Thank you, Mr. Minister.
Transferred out of our assets to pay capital, but it was something that we.
We're paying ourselves back at 0%. Why wouldn't we?
Yeah, yeah, it's like cash. Like cash, yeah. Thank you.
Right, so if if I was to ask, okay, so how's Bristol doing? You know, I mean, can you tell me, you know, are we okay?
Yeah, I think you guys are doing great. You have good unassigned unassigned fund balance, and you've made good with OPEB as well. So you're doing good.
So we're in good footing to borrow if we needed to, though, right?
Yes.
We have a good reputation, and would you say so?
I would say so, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd just like to ask, make one last point is that in the beginning, you spoke about no findings, which is a accounting way of saying we did not see an issue. We didn't see a process that was flawed, correct? Or overly flawed. I don't, I want to put words in your mouth.
Correct. You guys received a clean opinion.
Perfect. Excellent. Any other discussion from the council?
Excellent.
Sarah, did you want to add anything? No, that's just great news, to be quite honest. So leave it as that.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a receive and file or just to accept this?
Actually. Thank you.
Motion to accept the FY 2022 annual financial statements.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to accept. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Sarah, what are you going to do now?
That's it. You go dancing. You go dancing.
We're very fortunate. That's it. It's like the Fourth of July, right? Exactly.
Mr. First time. Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I3, and this is Town Clerk Dezero. And this is a request for ordinance amendment to correct the language of no parking on Bain Street as found in section 16143. So if I may, when we recently had the ad put in the paper for the no parking on Bain Street in front of the pump station on Bain Street that we adopted today. It it on the ad, it notates a portion of the ordinance before and after, so people know where that falls. And we discovered that there was actually an error in the ordinance that said there was no parking on the west side of Bain Street from Church to Constitution, which is incorrect. It's actually no parking on the east side. So in a manner to correct that, I'm putting this forward to the council. But I do also want to make mention, I did send this to, I did speak to Lieutenant Wasny in regards to this, and they're going to be further recommending that that ordinance, to be clear, extends to the east side from Bradford, from Constitution to Bradford, so heading south. Because currently, there is no parking there as well, but it doesn't clearly state it in the ordinance. So just to be enforceable and to clean up the ordinance, it's, there's no parking there right now. It's just to fix the ordinance.
Fair enough. So we just need a motion to refer to the solicitor to amend the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D I4, and this is Director Williamson. And this is in regards to an extension of the bicycle path connector at the Rhode Island DEM grant.
Should I take that the part of Diane will be played by Ed Turner this evening?
I'll do my best.
Good luck, sir.
This is just a request to for the for the council's approval to extend the grant for six months. The language in the original grant agreement with the Department of Environmental Management stated something to the effect that the council has to authorize the town administrator to approve the grant. I believe it was extended once already.
It was.
And as to that, so just out of an abundance caution, as the solicitor might say, we want to make sure that the project is moving along, and DEM has agreed to give us a six-month extension. Due to the, due to the timing of the grant expiration in your next meeting, I can tell to approve to. Due to the, due to the timing of the grant expiration in your next meeting, I had felt approved to ask you at this meeting.
Very like the, you want to roll slow and get it right the first time rather than rushing. So I'll make a motion to approve the grant six months extension.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to extend by six months. Any other discussion?
Town administrator to sign on that?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I heard.
So moved.
And Mary seconded it, correct? I'm standing. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J one, and this is forbid opening ten eleven renovations to Wally School. So this bid was actually canceled and extended. They, they needed a little extra time to be able to prepare those bids. So the bid was extended to the June twenty first meeting with the new bid number ten sixteen. All bidders and plant holders were notified. And the new bid is up, but it will be on the next council meeting.
So we, the town, needed more time or for clarity?
So.
Mr. Administrator? So our consulting engineer notified us that the contractors were stating because the, the the detailed work there, they needed more time to give us a better estimates for themselves, have better estimates, so they give us very, very good numbers, which was a good sign. Which tells us that they're being diligent. And so we give, we, we're allowing an additional three weeks. So there were a good number of, good number of bidders. So it's.
That's a good sign.
Rather than rushing and then a overpriced, we thought of the prudent to extend it, more time to be as competitive as possible.
That's very wise.
Excellent.
Yeah. So we just need a motion. Do we need a motion on this? We didn't accept anything or?
No, you didn't accept anything. It'll be brought back to you.
So no action necessary. Outstanding.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J two, and this was bid ten thirteen Central Street improvements. And we had a bid opening today at noon. We did receive three bids for that. The first bid was from L A L Construction Company, Inc., and that was in the amount of three hundred one thousand nine hundred thirty nine dollars and sixty eight cents. The second bid was from Narragansett Improvement Company, and that was in the amount of two hundred ninety three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. And the third bid was received from J N L Escavating, Excavation, Inc., and that was in the amount of two hundred seven thousand nine hundred forty one dollars and twenty five cents.
Motion to refer to the town administrator and the Department of Public Works to act in the best interest of the town.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, refer to the administrator and the Department of Public Works Director. Did I have that right? Any other discussion?
Yes.
And that was going to be, what about the other part of, of Central, of Central Street? This is the one from Bradford to Wardwell. So what about the Bradford to the dead end?
That long ago.
Yeah.
The issue here is the sidewalk. It was a very poor condition. It's on the east side of Central. Yeah, we're building a new sidewalk, which is important in the approach from Bradford. You're making, during school days, you're making a left turn to Central, going on Wardwell. We're going to improve the grade there. Make it much more sensible across.
That is a extremely highly used road and sidewalk, or whatever it is right now, will be a sidewalk at some point.
The part that you're referring to, Mary, that was actually done under the administration of Daniel McGee.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any, any who's in favor?
Hang in there, hang in there, we're almost there.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J three, and this is for R F P ten fourteen. And this is for the school bus transportation services. We did have the bid opening today at noon. We did receive two bids. One was from Fisher Bus, Inc. And the bid amounts were for the summer program per day per bus was three hundred and thirty five special event. Bus one was three hundred and seventy five special event bus two, three hundred and seventy five special event bus three, three seventy five, and special event bus four, three ninety five. The per mile for new trips was four dollars and ninety five cents. And the per hour over specified time where new trips was seventy five dollars. And then the second bid was from First Student, Inc., and that was for the summer program per day per bus, two hundred and forty eight dollars. Special event bus one, three hundred eighty seven dollars and fifty cents. Special event bus two, three eighty seven fifty. Special event bus three, three forty eight seventy five. Special event bus four, three eighty seven fifty. The per mile for new trips is three dollars and twenty five cents. And the per hour specified time when you trip was seventy seven fifty.
What is the special event buses? Is it like field trips that you're taking the kids on or?
Yeah. For the seniors.
So the, the special events, the first one was the Providence Performing Arts, when we go to see the P pack shows. The second bus was to the Veterans Memorial Auditorium for shows. The third bus was to the AMP, Providence AMP, in case we go to hockey night. And then the fourth one was to the Munus Socket Stadium Theater, because we've been going to see one of our own Ed Carusi and that Christmas Carol. So those are those special event trips that we wanted to separate out.
I have a question. Sure. What part does that play?
Last year was Old Joe, the guy who bought all the, the stuff from Scrooge's house from all the women and stuff, bringing them. That was.
Can't say I recall. So, okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counsel?
Make a motion to refer this to the administrator and the director to act in the best interest of the town.
Second, motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to refer to the administrator and the director. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J four, and this is for R F P ten fifteen. This is the charter bus transportation services. We had the bid opening today at twelve, and we received no bid.
No action necessary on that one? Those have no bids? Just listen.
Do they refer that? They refer to the minister to add?
Yeah, just refer to the administrator because there are several options at this point in terms of reaching out.
Counsel?
Motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
So I'll move. In the director.
Those for your, like, the Christmas to New York, those kind of trips?
Yeah, and then direct.
That's the biggie, the New York City trip. Up north, yeah, Boston Red Sox, the charter bus, we need a bathroom on.
Is Ed Carusi involved in any of that?
Negative.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I know Ed well. I'm giving him a hard time. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have no special reports. We have nothing from additional from the solicitor. We have not an executive session this evening. Just need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Good night.